Y'all stand. You say the pledge of allegiance after I'm last over, you definitely can swear.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father in heaven, we are grateful for you again for the day of life that you've given to each of us, grateful for the way that you've watched over each of us, taken care of us, provided for us. You never say thank you enough for the love that you have for us. Ask you, Lord, that as we meet and convene, conduct business, help us, Lord, to make decisions that for the betterment of this town and the community and the citizens that we serve. We pray this in Jesus' name.
All right, I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. We're gonna start with our roll call.
Alderman Vess.
Present.
Alderman Doray.
Present.
Alderman Gardner. Alderman Gardner is absent. Alderman McCoy.
Present.
Alderman Probst.
Present.
Well, four, Mr. Mayor.
We're now in session. I would like to have the Alderman look at the minutes. We have four minutes there. We missed one back in November, a special meeting. November 20th, special meeting, with the January 9th regular meeting, the January 12th, special meeting, and also the January 23rd, special meeting. If you would look over those, if anybody's got any questions or changes or things, so speak now. Okay, do I hear a motion? We accept.
I'll make the motion.
Motion, Alderman Doray. I hear a second.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Probst. I'm glad.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on first, we have Mr. Wes Dorr with Silas Simmons and Company, and they have completed their review and have a completed financial statements review, and he can tell you about it tonight. So, Wes.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman, you should've had three documents from me in your packets there. You've got the full bound document, which is audited financial statements and Silas Simmons' report. You've also got a single-page white document that I use to kind of go over and board with you, kind of an executive summary. It's not official, but I kind of use it as a presentation of the report. You've also got a three-page document there, which we refer to as a governance letter or a letter to those charged with governance. And what this letter is, and this is the letter I'm gonna start with, it's required communication between me, Silas Simmons is your external auditor, and you as the governing board. What this letter does is it identifies, you know, the audit, the financials that we were looking at at the time period. It gets into talking about that as part of our audit, we looked at policies and procedures and whether or not there were any significant changes during the year that we noted in how the town was operating, and we did not note any significant changes in the policies and procedures during this year. It also talks about significant estimates that are in your financial statements. Appreciation is an estimate, that'll be the one. The most significant estimate that affects, that has any variable or has the most impact on your financial statements is the pension liability. That's all based on actuarial estimates of what that liability is gonna be down the road. And we talked about that last, or year before and last year, about, you know, the impact that that new accounting standard had and the impact of recording that liability on your, not only your books, but all government's books. During our audit, we will, from time to time, run into things that need to be adjusted, and we will propose an entry to management, and management will consider it, and then typically they'll go on and make the entry that we're proposing. It generally has to do with generally accepted accounting principles that either, that the entry needs to be made to be in compliance with that, with GAAP. Typically, if they wouldn't make those entries, that means we've got a disagreement. If there were any disagreements between us and management during the year, I'm required to report that to you, and there were no, we had no disagreements on application of accounting policies or standards. We require certain representations from management, and they have signed the engagement of management representation, whether they did same days as our audit report here, where they basically, you know, in writing let us know that we provided all the information to you and that we haven't disclosed. We have disclosed all pertinent information to the financial statement for the period that you're auditing. Sometimes if management doesn't like something that we may have proposed, they may consult with other accountants to get an effect, what would be a second opinion. If I was aware of something like that, it happened during the year I'm required to report that to you, and I'm not aware of any second opinions that management saw that. That pretty much covers the governance letter. Now, we'll go on to the, we'll start with that single page that I'm gonna reference and then eventually we'll turn over, you know, into the audited financial statements. And what I've tried to do in this executive summary is just break the, basically break down the reports that are Silas Simmons', and then the balance sheets, income statements, and try to give you a page reference, a page number reference in here where you could, you know, possibly either now or later turn and see, and tie to what I have on this sheet. The report, the independent auditor's report on pages one and two, and then the other reports on pages 61 through 78 are the only thing in here that belongs to Silas Simmons'. Everything else in here is the town to date's financial statements. Now, with that said, we do assist the town in preparing those financial statements, which is typically management function. This, in our industry, this is a pretty common thing. Because it's a pretty common thing, we're required to take some certain safeguards, and actually the only way that we're able to prepare these financials for you is that if there's somebody on your staff in management that has the skills, knowledge, and experience to be able to accept responsibility for these financial statements, once we've assisted in putting them together, you're very fortunate, you've got a CPA on staff, and she's very knowledgeable, and has the skills, knowledge, and experience to be able to review our whether we can accept responsibility for it. So, but with that said, pages one and two is our audit report on the first financial statements. The first paragraph in the audit report basically identifies the financial statements that we're looking at, and we're looking at the June 30, 2017 financial statements of the town to date. Page two, paragraph two gets into what management's responsibilities are as far as these financial statements, as far as applying generally accepted accounting principles, and as far as internal controls. We are not an internal control, we are your external auditor on your financial statements. Internal control is something implemented by management. Then from there, it gets into what we do as auditors, and really, our job as your external auditor is we're trying to give an opinion on your financial statements as to whether or not they're fairly presented. And to do that, we get into your books and records, we ask a lot of questions, we do a lot of analytical procedures, and we gather evidence to support these financial statements. And I'm pleased today that, basically, our opinion is that your financial statements, as they're presented in this document, are fairly stated in all material respects, what we refer to as an unmodified report, so less to report, that we didn't have to modify the report for any issues that we had. Now, from there, we would turn over to page 61. Before we do that, I'm gonna cover a few numbers, but... Pages three through nine is management's discussion and analysis. It basically is part of the financials, but not of the basic financial statements. It's typically management's numbers. It gives you kind of some current economic factors, it gives you comparisons to the prior year, so there's some real good information contained there, but it's not really part of, it's part of the financials, but not part of the basic financial statements. Page 10, statement of net position, that's your balance sheet. Total assets and deferred outflows for the year were just short of $66 million. Total liabilities and deferred inflows was about $24.5 million, so that total net position of the town, or the equity of the town, is about, is $42,481,481. Now, of that, that's the good news, okay? Of that, capital assets, what the town has invested in capital outlets, capital assets, the infrastructure is over $44 million of that, so if you remove what you have invested in capital assets out of that, then you would have a negative net worth of that. How did your, page 11 is your statement of activities or your income statement for, it's town-wide? Here's what the question is, how did we compare to the prior year? In the prior year, the town lost about $740,000, pleased to report to you, basically we're break even this year. You were on the plus side of about $25,000, so that is headed in the right direction. Now, of that, governmental activities, primarily the general fund, this is, these are after transfer numbers, the governmental activities were about $845,000 positive. The business-type activities, which is primarily the utility funds, having that loss of about $820,000, so the nets out, so $25,000 again. You know, overall, your utility, like I said, this is, that's after transfer, probably the loss. I know that, you know, from time to time, when you're in a loss position, you start exploring the possibility of changing rates, either up or down. You know, typically what I like to recommend to people is, you know, you always, you gotta look at expense first before you start changing rates. You owe that to your citizens to make sure that you've kept the cost as low as possible before you start getting into rate changes on your revenue. Typically, when you explore rate changes, you hire consultants to give you, you know, do a rate study. The gas and the electric cost, how those costs are determined and how they come up with are very complicated. Rely on the experts that you hired to do the rate studies. I'm just trying to give you my recommendation on that. I tried to figure out electricity long time ago, and I realized I'm not an electrical engineer. Rely on those people, okay? Because, you know, water and silver, that's pretty easy, but the gas and especially electricity are complicated, so, you know, take what they give you in those rate studies and, you know, use them the best you can. From there, pages 12 through 19 are fund financial statements. Those are basically, we've just talked about the government-wide financials. This gets into a little bit of detail into different funds, into the major funds, and then all the non-major funds, but there's a lot of information there. Pages 20 through 47 are the notes to the financial statements. Those also give you a notable level of detail that's not, you know, to support some of those balances. As far as how the utility fund did here in the year, you can see electric department generated about $1.8 million, natural gas about $1.62 million, water loss about, just over a half a million, and silver was pretty well breakeven. You can see there, operating income was about $1.7 million, transfers out was about $2.5 million, further income of about $35,000. And you can see with the real front, you meant the rest of, actually, that issue break down from the prior year, so you can see that pretty much everything performed better through the current year. Let's see. Turn over to page 45, and you're going to ground back into that. This just gives you a little more detail about, you know, what makes up those numbers. If you turn over to page 61, these are our other reports that are contained here. It's part of our job as your external auditor, we're to gain understanding of your internal control and your controls are in compliance. In the process of doing that, we, from time to time, run across things that we're required to report to you. We're not giving an opinion on internal control or compliance, but like I said, it's part of our, our job as your external auditor, to give an opinion on financials, we do run across things that need to be reported to. Pages 63 and 64 is a summary of our report. This one has to do with federal funds. During this current year, you did have a single audit under the unified, uniform guidance. There were no findings as far as, as far as the federal funds. If you turn over to page 68, one of the things that we're required to do is follow up on prior year findings. So, pages 68 and 69 are established report on the findings that we, that I presented to you last year. Our finding 2016-1 last year had to do with an issue over the cash disbursement delay on the technology center. Management followed up promptly on that last year, submitted these vendor payments during the, while we were here last year. So, during the current audit, we followed up on that, no problems there, that deficiencies been cleared. Finding number two for 2016 had to do with compliance finding on the hydro reserve. The hydro reserve was funded. Place to report to you that this finding was cleared during the current year, as of June 30, 2017. That would be re-compliance on the hydro reserve. Finding 2016-3 had to do with reconciliation of accounts payable. Management resolved that finding pretty quickly, probably during the time while we were here performing the audit for the prior year, that finding has been cleared. Finding number four for 2016 had to do with a budget finding on the general fund. This is a repeat finding for 2017, but it's a little bit different situation. This was more of a budget control issue last year. That's really, you're in much better shape on that side of it. We'll talk more about the finding for the current year, and I get over current year audit. Finding number five last year had to do with missing documentation on the hydro funds. While this is better this year, and actually, by the end of the year, this has been resolved. This is a repeat finding, really, what happened on that early in the year, there were still some issues, primarily some meetings that we missed, and this is a repeat finding, not for the current year. All right. Current year findings, page 66. You've got three findings this year compared to five the last year, so every time we've got those findings, we're always heading in the right direction, okay? Finding number one, like I said, had to do with the general fund budget. This was actually caused by an entry that we proposed to management, okay? There was a capital lease that had not been recorded. Capital leases really a financing arrangement, but this was on the fire truck. It had not been recorded, and when we proposed it, it immediately took you out of compliance with your budget. Compared to the finding last year, this is a little different. This is a, this is a one-time thing, but rarely, it wouldn't happen very often. It's not a sustained problem that, the problem last year was a budgetary control problem. It was, it wasn't being watched as closely as it should have. This was, if it hadn't been for this entry, you would have been in compliance. Now, the entry had to be made, so, but I don't expect to run into this problem again, so... Finding number two had to do with the hydro. Like I said, by the end of the, end of the current fiscal year, I believe y'all were in compliance completely. The problem was early in the year, right after you had the change in administration. There was some, like I said, some meetings that we missed. I believe this has been resolved at this point, and I don't expect this finding. I believe next year, findings one and two, I'll be able to walk in here next year and say that management has cleared these, and the findings are satisfied.
My love, that's the question.
Sure.
When you're talking about that the finding has been cleared on this one, is it that in our first fiscal year, we did not have the two required hydro electric public meetings?
That was the majority of it.
The meetings that we had occurred in our current fiscal year, but were the reporting of the previous fiscal year. So, since we had the meetings during this fiscal year, even though we were reporting on the previous fiscal year, does that, so that we know what we need to do by the end of the year, does that count as those two meetings held within the fiscal year?
I would say yes. Let me, let me answer it partly by saying this. If we had not had the finding in the previous year, where I had to look at it and say, has this finding been cleared?
Right.
I couldn't say that. So, if we had not had the finding in the prior year, I wouldn't, this would not be a current year finding. That's only in there this time because, because we had the prior year finding.
But it was due to the fact that those two hydro public hearings were not held in our first fiscal year, okay?
Okay. Finding number three. All right, I'm gonna read most of this to you, okay? What this has to do with is legislative auditor's report that is still pending, as of, it is titled Advisory Services Report by Louisiana Legislative Auditor. Condition, following the change in administration on July 1st, 2016, the town asked Louisiana Legislative Auditor to perform assessment of internal controls over programmatic and fiscal operations and to provide recommendations to improve controls. As a result, the Louisiana Legislative Auditor issued a report in January of 2018 with its findings and recommendations. Okay, like I said, as of right now, that report is still not, they have not brought the final report to y'all. I believe they have a final report. It has been in draft form. I would, I suspect they're gonna issue it at any time. I do not believe, you know, as, as part of the model process, I have to submit my report to them to be approved, and they approved it, so I'm thinking they, they couldn't be very far from issuing their final report. Page 67. The Louisiana Legislative Auditor will, from time to time, provide advisory services at the request of local governments through its local government services division. The cause of the condition, some of the town's internal controls and processes need to be strengthened, and town needed to have some additional training. Effect of the condition, goal was to help the town strengthen internal controls on programmatic and fiscal operations. Our recommendation is that, we recommend the town review each of the findings included in the report and work to implement the recommendations during the next fiscal year. This separate report is published for record and may be reviewed at the Louisiana Legislative Auditor's website. The report should be dated in January of 18 and should be filed before you finish listing audits. Management agrees with the findings and work to implement the recommendations during the next fiscal year. Now, I reckon, I realize this is a little bit odd, okay? Here I am, at this as a finding appearing, they don't have it on their website yet. As part of this process, you know, they, they gave management an opportunity to see a draft copy of the report. They also gave me an opportunity to see a draft copy of the report, confidential copy of the report. The reason they let me look at it, one, they wanted me to reference this as a finding. This is pretty typical, the norm, that when they do this type of audit or examination, that they'll have the external auditor included as a compliance finding. I believe primarily so that when the external auditor audit in the next year, I'll have to look and see how y'all followed up on everything that was in their report. So, I really believe this is the mechanism that they have in place to make sure that any findings they have, get followed up on. Like I said, you know, it does feel a little awkward presenting that since they have an issue there. The other reason that they gave me the opportunity to look at was to make sure that I was still okay to say that your financial statements were fairly represented, as we have, and I didn't have any issue with throwing on releasing my report as it did. There is one other report in here. I'm explaining what this is. Over the past several years, the Louisiana Legislative Auditor has, has noticed or become aware that the same types of findings were happening all around the state, all small governments. They developed a list of procedures that may not typically be performed in the external audit, but there were things that they thought were important, that they wanted to have the external auditor start performing. So, it's what's called an agreed upon procedures engagement, and there's a pretty good list. You can see in this report, all the procedures that we performed are listed here. The legislative auditor was fully aware that the very first year that this was implemented, there were gonna be a lot of findings, because they knew a lot of small governments didn't have some of these things. When their report finally comes out, they actually looked at some of these things really in previous year before, before the period that I looked at. Some of the things that they're gonna have in their report, they're gonna say were deficiencies that y'all didn't have. By the time I came in and did my report this year, the majority of those things, or a lot of things that they're gonna say were findings in their report, had been corrected in my report by the time we looked at them. So, if you, if you take my agreed upon procedures report here and compare it to theirs, there's gonna be things that are finding in theirs that are not findings in mine, and I expressed that concern to them, and said that it would work out, so... Like I said, there are some findings there, you know, I'm not gonna try to go through all of them tonight. There's, there really, there says none of them had any impact on your financial audit, on your, on your financial statements. You know, like I said, the legislative auditor was fully aware that every local government that had had this done this year was gonna have findings, and they really weren't concerned about this year, what they're concerned about is next year, because they wanna see that all of these findings get addressed and that, you know, all towns have written policies on their, of those sorts of things, so...
So, is that why our audits are so long getting to, as you think part of it, because there were so many other towns? You think that was it? I can't name them some other, really.
I can't speak to why it took them so long. I have to be honest, I was surprised it took them as long as it did to, you know, after looking at the report, I was surprised it took them so long, so...
At the time, I would like to agree. They, and this is something they told me, when Bill and I went to Baton Rouge, one of the points, we went and sat down with them. They said, you know, that there was such a big report comprehensive that they looked at, that they had more things that were more pressing, more important, that they had to pull people off of and just kept, they kept going to put it to the back burner rather than keeping it on front burner finishing it. But, I mean, that's what we were told and we were being fed that pretty on a regular basis that, I mean, like now, it's...
Other than we weren't reporting?
Well, we're reporting, but they said that there were some issues, some issues that, you know, some of the municipalities have some very, very serious issues. They didn't solve and see a lot of other things that took their attention.
That's as good as explanation as I've heard of.
I mean, that's what I'm kind of just expecting, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, you're kind of at their mercy. But just like right now, you know, you're still waiting on that report. And it's got to be in and it's got to be due, but I have no control over that.
And we don't need to, you know, they don't need helping out.
Does anybody have any other questions or we have?
You've got to page seventy-two. You're on page seventy-two. Why don't you continue on?
Okay.
With those, those things that, with that dumb scene doing the meaning, but...
Okay. Well, like I said, these are the agreed upon procedures. Page seventy-two is, we had to perform procedures on written policies and procedures. Our finding was that the town had, at the time we looked at them, the town had written policies and procedures on everything but ethics. That's something that the town will address and you'll have those in a lot of time we come back around the next time. What they were looking for is whether or not you had written policies that dealt with ethics. Now, you've got an ethics commission in Louisiana. That's just one of those things, they wanted to see that you had written policies on a number of different areas that were listed in the procedure. You know, like I said, by the time I looked at it, y'all had everything but that one area. And I fully believe that'll be addressed before the next audit.
We just note that, and we do require every employee and person associated with town to have the ethics training on an annual basis and it's done and we have, if they do a good job, we'll make it, making sure they do that, have certificates in everybody's, you know, personnel file. But if there's something written, we'll sort of take care of that. I was hoping for a manual to care of that.
Well, let me just say this, just because you don't have a written policy, that means you didn't have unwritten policies in place to deal with it. Legislative Auditor wants to see written policies on everything. You know, for years, most small governments operated with no written policies, but they had unwritten policies, they had a way they operated where they addressed all these things.
I mean, they went to their site to find out if they were violating ethics, because basically, they want us to have a copy of that. I mean, what are we calling that?
Yeah, I mean, everybody's kind of got a doc set and tailor it. Basically, you're going to go out there and take that policy and tailor it.
For your own team.
That's fine. Go ahead. Do you have any more A, B, you're going to go down the list? Because we're going to run into the ethics and get their options. Okay. All right. Policies and procedures that they're looking for, they're looking for one A, they're looking for budgeting, including preparing, adopting, monitoring, minimum budget. C, purchasing. C, disbursements. D, receipts. E, personnel, payroll and personnel. F, contracting. G, credit cards, debit cards, fuel cards, and any other cards that you might have. Travel, H, travel and expense reimbursement. I, ethics. J, debt service. Like I said, our finding, we reviewed the policies and procedures for related functions above and procedures through our review and were able to verify that the entity had appropriate written policies and procedures for related topics, with the exception of the ethics section. Page seventy-three, section two, has to do with the board, the finance committee, if it applies, in y'all's case, it would be the full board. Procedure was to obtain and review the board minutes from fiscal period. We did that during our review. We noted that budget to actual comparisons were not consistent with the former each month. Okay? So, most likely in the beginning of the fiscal year, there were probably some times where Deborah was trying to catch up, that some of that probably lagged behind by the end of the year. I believe you've been getting adequate information to be able to do your job as all of them, but it was not consistent through the whole year. Section three, bank reconciliations, no exceptions. That had been a problem a couple of years ago, where we had some problems with that. Number four also had to do with bank reconciliations and whether or not reconciliations had been carried, whether or not they had been reviewed by management. All the bank, all of the bank reconciliations had been prepared. We believe, based on verbal responses, that they had been reviewed by management, but there was no indication of management's review on those, on those bank reconciliations. Just as another footnote to that, we didn't run into any problems with any bank reconciliations. We didn't have to propose any entries or go back to them and say something's wrong, but everything was good there. Other than, there was no physical indication that somebody had signed off that they had reviewed that bank rec.
Is that...
Now it's in place, I guess. Now it's in place.
It will be.
Is that, does that mean Deborah initial late statements or Jay initial late statements?
Yeah, whoever, you know, whoever's actually reviewed, most likely Deborah, most of the time, she just didn't put initial off, put her initial on, you know, something like that. I mean...
Yeah, it's similar. We have to have someone initial off.
It's a good, it's always a good practice to have somebody, other than the person preparing the bank rec, to review them. You know, it could be a board member, it could be another member of management, but there needs to be some evidence that the review actually took place. Next section deals with collections. As far as the procedures, we obtained a listing of cash check, money orders, cash collections at all locations, and management representations that the listings was complete. Like I said, number six there, going with brief and all of them.
I said to the auditor's pleasure, he was looking for something that I love.
Anyway, as far as the cash collections, we did all the procedures there listed under number six. A, we obtained existing written documentation on them. We looked to make sure there were sequential numbers of receipts. We went through and segregated some of the collections by dollar amount so that we could look at some of the higher volume, higher dollar areas. Now, we looked at some of the original documentation as far as deposit slips and things like that. And then we looked to see if the town was using sequential number receipts, system records and other documentation to verify that the receipt was complete. And then we also looked at the existing written documentation. We noted no exceptions in the cash collection process. Next section there is disbursements. Like I said, we basically, under sections eight and nine, in ten through thirteen, we covered numerous procedures as far as disbursements. At the bottom of page seventy-five, you see there was one instance of an unsigned purchase order and one instance of an incurred expenditure with no supporting invoice. Neither one of them were material, but it was just a lack of documentation. But those were the only instances that we ran into. Under number, procedure number ten there, you see there was no written policy noted that prohibits the individual responsible for processing the payment from adding new vendors. Typically, you wouldn't want somebody who can add new vendors also processing payments, but it's not adequate segregation of duties. You know, that's something that management will address and resolve. But really what that is, is it was not, it was, we didn't find anything other than there was a control issue there that could be better.
Was that the same situation that we got into where we had vendors being added and payments, not in our administration previously, that kind of got us into a little bit of trouble?
I think that was, that situation was a little bit different. But at that point in time, you had almost no control over your accounts payable, and that was something that we had reported on during that period of time. Accounts payable weren't being reconciled and there really were no controls over accounts payable, and that led to some of the issues that you're referring to. As far as any, anything with credit cards, debit cards, or fuel cards, performance procedures related to those, we noted no exceptions on any of those procedures that we performed. Page seventy-seven. Top of that page is continuation of some of the things that we did related to credit cards and debit cards and fuel cards. We did have run into one thing. There was no written evidence of review or approval by someone other than authorized cardholder. And we were able, but we were able to say that there were no finance charges assessed on the statements. When these credit card statements come in, I mean, whoever has them, somebody, just like the bank recs, somebody other than the credit card holder needs to be the one reviewing. So, there needs to be some evidence that the credit card activity for the month had been reviewed. Also, it would be, you know, illegal if you hadn't paid them and you had some service charges or interest charges, but that didn't happen. Just like the bank recs, now there needs to be some evidence that somebody is reviewing what's paid for with those credit cards. Okay, on over to page seventy-eight. Travel and expense reimbursement. On procedures seventeen and eighteen, you see there, under eighteen, our finding, we obtained entities with policies related to travel and expense reimbursements compared to amounts and the policies per deal and the mileage rates established by the U.S. General Services Administration. Found nothing, no exceptions there. Under nineteen, look over on the next page on seventy-nine, page seventy-nine. As far as travel and expense reimbursement, no exceptions were noted during the above procedures for travel and expense reimbursement. So, we had no issues there. Contracts. This would be construction contracts or any service contracts, basically any contracts the town has with an outside vendor. Only issue, we didn't have any, we didn't find any specific issues with any contracts. The only issue we had was that management was not sure that the list of contracts they provided was a complete list, okay? You know, and that's, that's kind of working progress, you know, trying to put your feet on the ground and sometimes you come in, new administration, you don't know what all that there until you actually find it. The list may have been complete, but basically, management couldn't verify that it was a complete list. Section twenty-one there on the contracts. Following on over to the next page, page eighty, we performed a number of procedures related to that list of contracts that we did have. No exceptions were found during those procedures. Payroll and personnel. We obtained a list of all the employees, we reviewed compensation pay, we reviewed changes to hourly rates and salaries during the period. No exceptions were noted. And under section twenty-three, we randomly selected twenty-five employees and performed various procedures to their pay and on their files. On page eighty-one, you see on, as far as time cards or time sheets, there was no evidence of supervisor review. So, like the credit cards, like the bank recs, I know somebody's looking at them, but there's no evidence for us to see. If we had run into problems, then it would make me start thinking maybe somebody wasn't reviewing, but because we didn't find any problems in any of those areas, I believe what they told me. But with that said, it's still a finding because there was no evidence. Procedures twenty-four and twenty-five, also relating payroll and personnel. As far as times, we inquire with management as to whether any employees, officials were terminated during the period. Per management, there were two employees, official termination during the current fiscal year, and no exceptions were noted for these two individuals regarding payments in accordance with policy or contract. As far as overall on payroll and personnel, there were no other exceptions noted on any payments. Okay. Next section is ethics. We selected five employees and looked to see if they had the required ethics certification or documentation. One of the five files did not have the certification, so it just sucked into work on it. Number twenty-seven, as far as any alleged ethics violations, but we'll report to the Department of Ethics, documentation area, and find any exceptions or anything there. Page eighty-two. Under twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty, I have to do with debt service. We noted no exceptions during the above procedures on any of the outstanding or new debt or tax measures. And finally, the last section there of it, that's the procedures thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three. And just dealt with some miscellaneous things there, whether or not there was any misappropriation or during this period, you know, we didn't note any findings on other procedures. As far as management's responses to all the sections, management agrees with findings and will diligently in the next fiscal year resolve all exceptions. So, compared to the amount of procedures that we performed, I think, in what I've seen maybe at some other governments, I would say yours, your number of findings is only lower than ours. And overall, as far as your audit, you know, obviously, there's still findings, there's still plenty of things to work on, but, you know, money-wise, as far as bottom line on your government-wide financial statements, as far as the numbers of findings, as far as the seriousness of those findings that we reported, I, you know, from my view, it looks like you've got everything hidden in the light of the red, so I commend you on that.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Wes, thank you very much.
Okay, going to number two, review of management's statements for December endeavor. Both.
Okay, I've given in your packet the balance sheet as of December 31st, which gives the total assets, liabilities, and fund balances for the, for that time period. There's really not much change from... For that time period, there's really not much change from the previous month, but we do still have a maintaining the reserve in hydro fund. We are, at that particular point, we were also expecting a royalty of a million seven, plus we have the LIPA revenue to receive in that month, so it was a million eight as a receivable in hydro fund that we received in January. Well, February, sorry, February first. Let's see, and then accounts payable, nothing much to talk about there. Hydro loyalty fund, we did have to pay a $400,000 invoice to Catalyst. And on the enterprise fund, we do show a million eight in receivables in the utility fund. And then the industrial park fund, we're showing $763,000 there, which is primarily from Project Blue.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry. We're showing the receivable of how much from Project Blue?
Plus $763,000 at the end of December.
And that is money collected?
No, that's receivable. That's rent to be received.
I see.
All right, so that's pretty much the balance sheet. The segment of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balances for the six months ended December 31st. This is just a summary of all the funds, and our combined totals of revenue shows fourteen million three seventy-nine. Our current expenditures are fifteen million one eighty-six, and our change in net position is a negative eight hundred and six thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. And our ending fund balance is twenty-one million eight sixty. If we look at the budget to actual comparison summary for the six months ended December 31st, the general fund is showing, you know, revenues of nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand with expenditures of four million eight thirty-three, with transfers in and out, which leaves us a net change in position of four hundred and twelve thousand to the good. On the special revenue fund, we're showing revenues of six million seven ninety-seven and expenditures of four million six forty-four, with transfers in and out, we show a negative seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, which this would probably be predominantly the six hundred thousand that was for the hydro rebates, because that's part of that negative balance there of expense that we had. The debt service fund, we're just paying on our debt, and on the capital projects fund, we have revenues of eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand and expenditures of six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, which is a, with transfers in and out of four hundred and one thousand dollars, change in net position. And enterprise fund, we're showing total revenues of five million seven forty-seven and total expenditures of four million six forty-nine, and a change in net position of a negative eight eighty-six, six fifteen, eight hundred and eighty-six thousand, six fifteen. So overall, as I said earlier, you know, our total revenues are less than our total expenses by eight hundred and six thousand eight forty-eight at the time. Now, there are some revenues that have not been accrued, such as property taxes, that are due at the end of December, but that's not going to make up for that difference. But we did not budget for the... For the rebates, so we've got that to deal with. I think that's primarily what this balance represents. And also, we have expenditures for the retention program payments that we gave to employees at the end of December, and it's just what it ends up being, eight hundred and six thousand eight forty-eight.
Deborah, excuse me, I... Basically, what you're saying is reading what I said, we did... When we did the budget, did not include the royalty payment that we gave to the residents as well as the retention payments, and until we amend the budget, it's going to show that there, plus we're there some time and there's some monies, even though the taxes, I think, at the law are not actually due until March. Is that correct, Old City?
The occupational license.
And then also the actual collection of the occupational license.
I think it's March.
It's March. But anyway, that's why this particular month is looking like that, until we amend our budget, which we hope to do real soon, is to start getting together, maybe having some roundtable discussions with staff and groups of aldermen, where we start looking at what we need to do, endeavor to keep a list of what we need to do. So I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Well, that pretty much is the discussion on the summary of the budget actual comparison, and also, you know, I've provided to y'all the details among for all of the different departments showing the variances, and I've also provided a summary of discussion on narrative of the list of budget revisions that we kind of keep a track of so that you're aware of them, plus I can keep up with it when budget time comes to amend this budget, which we know has got to happen. And these are the items in your packet. I don't know if you had a chance to review it or not, but, you know, we've talked about a lot of these at meetings, and some of these we got your approval beforehand to take care of. But one of the things that I wanted to bring out is on the police department, you know, we do have to include the capital lease proceeds for the total amount of the purchase of the vehicles, and also, we have to include the expense so that we'll be in compliance at the end of next year, and we'll have that funding. It's an in and an out. It doesn't really affect cash, but it does have to be in the budget. And also, I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of the error in the budget on salary and wages, where it should... The salary and wages should exceed the budget amount by approximately two hundred thousand. This again had nothing to do with anybody's... Nobody's gotten a raise or no additional hirings, but the budget was presented to the... By the chief for a million six in salary and wages, but when I received it in accounting, it was brought down to a million four because I created a spreadsheet where I could take all the employees and recalculate their pay so that I had benefits, so that I could go back to that report and come up with the number so that we could analyze it. So, but I just wanted to make sure that that was brought out because when I did it, I based it on eighty hours, when most of the personnel worked eighty-four hours straight time. And also, the budget didn't include the retention payment approved by the board. And then I also wanted to make note that some of these expenses for personnel should be offset by the lower group in medical insurance costs that we went in and revised the health insurance so that in January, we should... The premium cost to the city or town should come down. So that should help offset some of that.
The budget that the chief of police gave to you?
Well, the budget really came to me, I have evidence of having gotten it for the proposed 2016 budget, okay? It was one point six. And when I went in and did the spreadsheet and created the... That I used to put the numbers in, it coming down to a million, one point two or three? One point three, okay. So I adjusted that accordingly on my spreadsheet to take it into account, so because the budget is something that the mayor presents, even though he gave me that for the previous fiscal year, I didn't, you know, we probably didn't have the time that we needed to review the budget before it got approved so that he could have seen, you know, that it was lowered from what he wanted it to be, and maybe could have called it and explained to me what the problem was so that we could have kept it in the budget like he wanted it.
But the mayor doesn't control the chief of police's budget?
The budget there, the overtime was, at the time when we did the budget and I did my spreadsheet, I estimated it the best that I knew it at that time. And so, plus during the year, we also had someone out on major medical leave that they paid him his regular salary, plus they had to pay someone on overtime to cover for his shift. So there's other factors that go into that amount that may not strictly follow the budget, and so the budget will need to be amended for those reasons. But I am, you know, I have explained this to the chief of police, and what I've talked to Johnny, and we, you know, are trying to do an analysis, which we have done that today, and we do still think that on the fire department, that paying the overtime is a savings to the city versus hiring new employees and for those different shifts and paying their benefits. And on the police department, you know, I'm just sorry that I made that call on my own without having done the research or gone back to Joey and said, okay, this is what I'm coming up with, what's the difference? So, you know, that's my fault.
I want to make a statement about that, and I've pushed it since I've been in his office. Attrition is the way to go, but we haven't processed in that process, except for firemen who are the lowest-paid employees in the city. So I feel like we hadn't done what should to save the citizens money by attritioning our people because we haven't done it anywhere but there. Every employee who has been hired or laid off or whatever they've been, they've been brought back in the position, except to fire. I want to make that.
That's not true.
Well, you can tell me one.
Ricky Holland was not.
Only one, a year and a half into our office, and I made that statement when I started.
No, we attritioned out a carpenter also.
Okay.
When Bubba Ains retired, we didn't replace him.
That's the only one?
Out of all?
How long ago?
Up last year.
I do want to make a point that the ones that, you know, they talked about earlier that were either terminated, and I sat down with Mark and any of our lead or any of you that have someone who does leave, if it's a mission-critical job that they have, that they do, we talk about it at length, and if there's something that they have got to have, they say, we've got to have this person, we need this person with this certification, we need this person on this truck. And I rely on them to do that, and so... But if there's somebody that we feel like that is something we can do without, Johnny's been very agreeable, and I agree with you.
And I agree with you.
And I agree with you, yes, I think you're right. We need to look and make these decisions when we have somebody leave, whether or not they need to be replaced or not. And I agree with you. Until we do that, you're not going to see what you're kind of... And I know, I'm agreeing with you, but I'm saying that...
But we just had to process through that process quick enough, in my opinion. That's my opinion, because if we're not a city anymore or a town, we're not going forward, we're going back with the people that we have to employ to take care of the citizens.
Hasn't it also happened in streets and sanitation?
We attritioned two people last year. Well, one of them was Ricky and the other one was another employee.
But it's...
And we've attritioned eleven.
I mean, I agree, Ricky, with what you're saying, and I think all of them would say...
We've attritioned eleven people with the...
I know you have. I mean, I know you didn't hire back whatever you're... It was more like not hiring back, right? What attrition, when you started, you just said, I'm getting rid of those, but you did a good job at that, Joey, I'd say. You saw what you needed to do, I think, and got it down. But I don't see that a lot of places in our town. That's my opinion.
I think we just went through every department, basically, and showed where it's happening. Lee has two, Mark has one, and it's... You know, it's a process that takes, we got time to do.
I mean, we got to do it. I think we do. That's my point. I mean, let's continue that process. Not to get anybody laid off or fired, which the statement you made was, I mean, it's a utility deal, no, it's about taking those people and not bringing them back and letting people work more or less, you know, and that's all over.
Okay. All right, Deborah?
Unless y'all have any questions, I'll do it.
Okay. Any questions?
I do have one. And I know you and I talked about a discrepancy in the numbers, okay? So we won't... Until we clear that up, I won't say the actual number. But when you're talking about the Concordia Banking Trust budgetary loan, the loan that we're having to renew at this meeting?
Yeah.
Um, we had budgeted an amount to repay that.
That's right.
And we're having to reduce the amount that we're going to repay. Where will that extra money go? Because we're talking either six hundred thousand extra dollars or four hundred thousand, depending on...
Okay, well, this budget is a combined budget of all the forms, and so it's kind of the way we had it figured and did the budget, any excess that we had, we were going to apply to that loan. Well, the hydro rebate, you know, we didn't budget for that, and that does take out money, even though it's been served for that, and we have the money, it's been paid for that. But the way the budget is, it's going to have to... It's going to have to come out of, is that's where the money went, overall. But to break it out, we would have to break out each department.
But if that money was in... If the money for the rebates was in... I understand it wasn't in the budget. Like, I understand it wasn't listed in the budget. But if the money was set up in an account for the use of rebating?
Yep.
Why was the additional six hundred thousand or four hundred thousand, depending on the number that, you know? Why would that money be used to pay for that rebate? I understand that there's a discrepancy on the budget because we didn't list that on the budget.
It's an expense. You have to show it as an expense.
Right.
You got profit and expense, and so it's included in the expense. So it's not like it was just moved over.
Right.
In the previous year, it was really based on cash that we got in the previous year, but we have to show it as an expense this year. It just does, and it reduces the overall amount of money that we have.
Can I add to this, thank endeavor, please correct me if I'm wrong, but some of the need for that, those funds, is a reduction in revenue that we have from a mildish summer and fall.
That's true.
And utility revenue. So since we don't... Didn't have the income that we anticipated, we have to do some offset. Does that make sense? I mean, that's really a major reason, I think, that we're having to do.
But what kind of threw the red flag to me was when you said that that extra money was used for those hydro electric rebates, that...
I promise you...
That bothered me.
I promise you.
Didn't bother me, it just...
I have the same feeling.
Put a question.
I understand.
When she said... Okay.
I understand what y'all were saying too, and it is kind of hard for me to get it across sometimes, but the revenues are not there, you know, right now.
Right.
So we're hoping that things will turn around and that we'll get the money to pay more down on the line, but we're kind of leaving that open until we know how to get closer to the end of the year to see where the money is going to come from.
And that's a good... I mean, we don't want to pay more on debt and put us in debt. I'm not suggesting that we need to do that by any means. I was just curious, where would that extra fundage, whatever it ends up being, the 450 or the six, where would it go?
Right.
And so you've answered that.
That's right. Thank you. Bill did that.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. On number three, we're going to go to occupational license. First one, we got, we need to run the Assembly of God, and there's going to be a federal corn business. And I went to check the address, and I didn't find it, but it is there. It's Home Hardware, and from what I understand, he's contracted with these people, they come in. Who talked to them? Jay, I think you...
They called the church. And they're going to come in once or twice a week. And John, I think I talked to, ask John, it's going to be handled like a federal license, I believe, Alden, Ed, strike.
Do I hear motion to approve this?
Approved.
Make a move.
Motion made to Alden approach there, second.
Second?
Make it to Alden, Gloria, Alden, Labor.
Are they here, someone?
What is it? No, they're here.
Second one is Laurie Peatley and Antoinette Shields. They don't have the A&amp;L Sweet Boutique, and that is going to be sixteen forty-two Carter Street. And are they here tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, y'all standing up, tell us about your business. I'm a quick on the spot.
Oh, yeah. We want to venture off into like, we call it A&amp;L Sweet Boutique. It can be like a boutique, ninety percent catered to the church community, you know, I've been around the neighborhood, and like you used to getting going to Supertan or one of the other stores and buy a nice lady church suit with the jacket and the hat, but now you can't find it. So we want to cater some stuff from outside, maybe like in California or New York, some dressy church suit with the hat and the bags to match it, and then it was in that boutique, and the same for me, some suits for me, and within that boutique, we want to have like a little sweet shop, like when the baseball game's over, they can come get a snow cone, see make the world best snow cone, and we, you know, fancy... See, make the worst best snow cone, and we, you know, fancy snow cone cup with the fruits, you know, that can eat fruits, you know, and we hope to, um, I'm going to start off managing it, but we hope to at least, you know, employing these three or four other people with us.
And by the way, that building is the Meyer Building, that, that Myers complex, by Dr. folks' office there for those.
The Dr. Higgers and Bruce, Bruce counseling.
Right, that way. They're over there by, on the same side of Dr. folks' office, you know?
Right, same side with Myers Electric, right, you know, that's true.
I went by to see y'all there, but the, your mannequin's in there already.
I put the mannequin, I put them together today.
Well, welcome to Vidalia, and we hope you're very successful in Vidalia also.
Well, we live in Vidalia.
Oh, well.
Yeah. We live in Vidalia, right up on Green Acres Road, so it's hop, skip, and a jump from the building. You know, and we're excited by it because I'm partially retired, and I want to invest into Vidalia because it is growing. Since I moved in Vidalia back here in nineteen eighty, it had grown three hundred percent since I moved here. And now I want to invest in it.
Motion made by Alderman Dory, second.
Second?
Second by Alderman Dory, our favor.
All right.
Yeah, that's, I wanted to ask, are y'all going to have a sign application later to?
Oh, yeah, we are. Our contact Sutton, Sutton Design Signs of Nature.
Okay.
And they was on vacation for the last two weeks, but they should be back tomorrow. And then I will contact them again tomorrow because I don't know what kind of signs we need yet, and they will come out and give us a quote and everything on it.
And we'd be glad to give you any directions if you need some help, just hop up.
All right.
Okay, next we have Ms. Alicia Smith, and she's going to have Sweetie's Express and fast food, hot dogs, chicken and burgers. Is she here tonight? Okay, that's going to be in the building up here by Weeks Furniture, uh, next to where the ten beds used to be that building there. Uh, but that's where that is. Is anybody got any question on that?
No. I make the motion to be approved.
Motion made by Alderman Dory, they are second. Alderman McCoy, say it, our favor.
And that includes the motion to approve the sign, or will that need to be accepted?
Well, that's the next thing, is to sign this, uh, sign application is number four, so they do have a attachment of their sign and their recommending. Is there any question on that? Looks professional to me.
I make the motion to be approved.
Motion made by Alderman Dory, they are second. Second by Alderman Probst, our favor.
All right.
Okay, number five, okay, we opened up the public hearing for the adoption of the ordinance of the borrowing of two million five hundred thousand by the city. This is a renewal only of a line of credit, so we appear a motion to go into public hearing.
Motion.
Motion made by Alderman Dory, they are second. Second by Alderman McCoy, our favor. And now we're open for public hearing. Any questions in relation to the renewal of the?
Well, that's the historic loan that hasn't been paid off.
That's correct. Let me go back and I'll go ahead and give you a quick rundown. Back when we first went to the bonds and making, we were kind of sure coming into office, uh, you know, what we were stuck with, and we were finding people that were other things that they. Anyway, we thought three point five million dollars is what we asked for for a line of credit. We only drew two million. Uh, it renewed last year at this time, and we just, we reduced it from three point five down to two point five as far as the line of credit. We decreased to pay two hundred thousand on it, it's a balance of one point eight. Uh, so we're asking for another renewal. I would like to get another, another year on it and have money available in case as the port project gets spanked up and they start construction of the port. Sometimes these delays in giving funding from back from the governmental people after the construction or construction company comes in and wants to get payment. You know, there's a time lag in there, and I want to make sure that we don't jeopardize the town because it's a pretty big, those can be pretty big checks with that variety. And I don't want to jeopardize.
And that'd be a fine thing on our end.
Yeah, well, but, you know, we hope not, but we want to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a bind, and that would be a last resort also. But this is just a renewal of it, and what my plan is, is one more year renewal, and at that time, hopefully, we will have some things done for our rate studies, done on the town that we already working on getting some quotes on that we can do and sit down with all of us, Aldermen and department heads, and, you know, also these engineers that will come in and do a rate study and giving us a good look at where we need to be at the municipality, and then setting that balloon up on either a monthly payment or a five-year balloon, and just going forward with it, because at some point we do have to address that debt.
Are you anticipating those things that you mentioned, uh, using the additional seven hundred thousand? Now, if you got it paid down to one point eight million now, uh, are you maintaining a two point five million open line of credit?
Well, it's just there to, I hope to catch any kind of, for example, there's, you know, if we have another issue with the riverfront, that we have to pay someone to come put up Tesco baskets, and that's another issue, I don't want to get into that tonight. But for example, we're still due from on some big things that we've done, and that's been what, we're on top of them, we're fighting for, but when you're dealing with getting money from the federal government, it's really tough, but we're staying on, going to get paid. But I just want to make sure we have that out there available if we need, that's all this is. Any other questions? Okay, do I hear a motion, we close the public hearing?
Make that move.
Motion made by Alderman Probst, they are second. Second by Alderman Dory, our favor. Okay. Counsel, my, uh, public hearing is over, is there any other action we need to take on this other than?
Mary.
Number also. No, we haven't, no, we haven't. Is there any other acts required?
Well, at this time would be a discussion for the adoption of the ordinance.
Okay.
And probably after that would be a motion, my second, to adopt it, a vote on that.
All right, so we're in the discussion phase in court, counsel. Any questions?
You need that.
Pardon? It's just, it's just a safeguard event, you know, there's a lot of things coming up also with Blue that, um. Pardon?
There's a lot of things going on.
I understand, but I, and I'll be glad to tell you that it's been a process that is going to happen. Are we satisfied with how it's kind of, you know, we keep kicking the can down, no, we're not, but we met Friday with, with, with Blue representatives, also someone who was with the LED, with the state, and where they're at, and of course, of course, I'm getting off topic here, but they're in the point where it's been approved by USDA, federal and state, at those levels. They are having to do the, the lenders getting chosen, we also, we got, we got emails yesterday of who the contractor, the contractor, Dory, has been contracted to do the work on putting the equipment in. And one of the holdups is that this week it's going to be done, their financial statements, their pro forma financial statements are going to have to be audited and submitted to the lender, and those, that is going to be completed this week, as well as the appraisal. There was an appraisal on the property, but their appraisal is going to also require, this is the traditional things we talk to her, is going to require, when this equipment is all has been installed, what's that building going to be worth? And that's, those two, those things are supposed to happen this week. And after that, a hard date closing will be given, and a closing that we hope will happen somewhere here in Concordia Parish, and it should be announced within, they told us two to three weeks, I keep throwing that number out there, but at that point, we will then set up something for official announcement that will be, I hope, be. Anyway, that being said, we still counsel back to what you said, any more discussion on the line, Mr. Probst.
Usually on a line of credit, you're only paying the interest on the amount that you actually have outstanding, which in our case is one point eight. Is there any difference with this bond? Are we paying interest based on two point five or only the outstanding one?
Only on, only what you have outstanding.
Just like a ELO.
And I'll be honest with you, the Concordia Bank, the rate they've given us on this is so low, it's almost, you know, it's not paying anything, you know, they've been very good to us on that, and we want to say that, and that's, and that's something we have to, we're required to bid, and we did contact other banks and that rates, you know, before we, you know, would do this. And we did it again on the renewal, so we're very comfortable with that.
Yeah, because it's set up that if there are any additional draws from this, that those draws must come before the board?
No.
It's not set up that way?
No, it's not set up that way. It's there, now, y'all, if there is a draw, I promise you, you'll be made aware of it, or if any kind of draw may against you, I mean, it should be, I mean, but it does, it does encumber, you're actually putting some, you're booking something that, yeah, it would, it would be, you know, hey, yeah, we can, we have the.
Okay.
Any other question? I hear a motion to proceed.
Make a motion to proceed.
Motion made by Alderman Probst, they are second.
My second.
Second by Alderman Dets, our favor, roll call, Alderman McCoy, is that what you want to do? All right, roll call, Alderman Probst?
Four.
Alderman Dets?
We're four. We got a motion, seven.
In favor.
In favor. Yes. Alderman Dets?
Yes.
Alderman McCoy? Alderman Ray?
Yes.
Okay. Number six, okay, disposition, discussion and disposition of the day, police department surplus vehicle, and Joey or Frank, you?
Me too. We got, uh, seven vehicles, um, like five at the PD on the back, one at the barn, and Mr. Wedgeworth is in the other one. That's the seven that we're getting rid of. We're going to leave it up to the Aldermen, that's what they do with them, I'm sure. Mr. Wedgeworth is going to want to keep his, we just want to get it off of our inventory. So, uh, and we have, out of those seven, three of them run. So, uh, I know.
Over, off, one, three, or you know?
What? Not counting this one.
He's not counting that.
I'm sure that's, you're going to want to keep that one running.
Yeah, well, we're still fair shape for a while.
Yeah. Uh, but I'm not counting his, three of them are, um, running. Um, I know several agencies have been asking about them, Fairdy being one, I think Rich Chris is wanting one, but I really don't think that they know the kind of shape these cars are in. So.
Well, what we'll do, and this is what I like to do, is just, is us, you know, take a look at these vehicles and get, so y'all have any kind of mechanics look at them, give a list of what's wrong with them, because?
We've got somewhat of a list on a couple of them. I know one of them has a bad transmission, one of them has a bad motor. One of them don't run at all. One of them got one.
I would, if it's okay with the board, can we just get, give y'all, and maybe go ahead and get a status report on it, let y'all look at it, and then us try to determine if y'all are okay with that, or? And then, I mean, go ahead and just, you know, once we do that, it's.
Are you wanting to pull Officer Wedgeworth to the city office, or to wherever department he's in?
Well, it's the convention center.
It's the convention center, right?
No, I just want to make sure that one he's got, that if there's a better one there.
I think he's got the best one out of the family. He does do what he's got.
He's chasing, looking very forward that night.
He's welcome to come, look, he's welcome to come.
What I'm saying, I guess just assess what is and look at what he wants on Fairdy, Clayton, and whatever.
I know Fairdy's asked us too, uh, Rich Chris has asked for one. Uh, we hadn't completely stripped a couple of them down, just in case they go to them. You know, we've left some old lights that was already mounted in, so, and we left some cages, which if they go to them, we can leave them in there, if they sail, we got to take them out.
Is this going to be most everything we're talking about getting rid of as far as that type of a car? You know, you told me one time you were trying to get rid of all those, that type, all the Crown?
Uh, we end up keeping a couple. Uh, I know we got an investigator studying one. We've got some, uh, street crossing guard that, for schools in the morning. They come get it from the PD, they drive it to the school, and they bring it back. They don't, they don't take them home, but it's good for stuff like that.
That's some of these cars?
No, these, these cars is, uh, the seven that we're getting rid of. They're all, it's two Dodges and the rest are Crown Vigs.
Mr. West, I have to be honest with you, I've heard what you want to do, but I just, I thought we ought to look at it and see. I know that City Court, the City Marshal requests a vehicle to City Court, it's one of those, you know, with work, that, you know, that's another issue. Being able to work, maintain, and keep it in the city, build a people from having to get something, I certainly consider that.
Scott came and looked at them, I hadn't heard nothing back from him.
But what you want to make sure is done is that these, the expense of these old vehicles is no longer in your budget. Am I understanding you correctly? Okay. So if some of them were to be moved to different locations, different departments within the city, you want them out of your board?
That's right. They was costing me too much to maintain.
Okay.
And we should have already got them off insurance, I hope.
Well, I talked to the insurance company about that, and they said, no matter what we give them now, it doesn't come off till the term of this insurance policy is over.
The last, the last time when we were doing, we were moved, I think it was, we were removed a lot, it was thirty, forty vehicles.
And we will remove whatever these are.
We sent you a list.
Right. And I, I do that a little.
He's wanting to determine what they're like before.
Well, he says, he says it's housing expense for him, it's going to be that same expense for another department. That's one of the things I want, I do want to determine, if that is a possibility, I don't know what, you know?
Do you mind waiting until next month, till next meeting?
It's not going to make any difference in part, insurance, he said.
They're back here?
Yeah.
We, I told you, hold up, I said, we got two this night, one's at the barn, just got a blown-up motor and one.
And you can make a list of everything, product belonging, each vehicle, just give information about what each one of them has wrong with them. That's what it is.
Two of each then.
And that's what, and that's what I'm, we have to do a, a CEA cooperative endeavor agreement with these municipalities, we donate them to them, but I want to give them with the knowledge of, hey, this.
We got several vehicles that hate.
We can.
I agree with it.
So, give them.
Or the financials, or you know?
All right, any other question? I mean, we, I think we've kind of been agreeing what we need to do, is that, is that okay, Joey? Is that, you're good with it?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, let's move on to number seven, uh, the board group for hiring, Joey recently hired a new officer, and any questions? It does require approval, uh, the mayor and council approval on needing hiring and firing in within the electric police season, in that space.
I'm, uh, I'm down on three officers, um, from where I think I need to be, and I think, I really think I need to hire at least one back.
So you lost three, and you're only asking to replace one?
What did you tell them about Joey?
Uh, it'll be twelve until, uh, the one from overseas comes back, and I'm down.
And what?
Twelve officers.
I'm down thirteen, I'm down thirteen.
You got that many control, what you say?
No, I'm.
You're down twelve.
I'm down twelve, this is like thirteen, and I need to replace one.
Oh, gee. Are you asking how many?
Yeah, how many actual, how many actual officers do you have now?
Thirty-five, total.
Yeah.
Total, everybody, not just officers that work at the PD, thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
And that's, that's, that's three, two a shift, we got four shifts, we got four dispatchers, we got, um, an SRO at each school, I mean, I hate to get down.
We might discuss the SRO at one time in a cooperative endeavor with the school board about that. Did we ever look into that any prior?
They paid some.
They paid. They, they paid enough for one, one salary.
They pay a total of fifty. Not fifty per officer, but they pay a total of fifty.
For, for all four.
We might need to renegotiate. Yeah? We need to renegotiate.
We might need to go.
Tom will be a hard man. Tom's hard to deal with.
Uh, any other question on, uh, I hear a motion that we accept the hire, do you hire?
I think that motion.
Motion made by Alton, according to their second.
Second.
Alton in favor? Okay, number eight, we had, uh, losing the Department of Transportation, which by the way, if anybody asks about the five hole on the bridge, I serve responsibility.
No, it's, it's. Oh, I did a full-on research on that one. I meant to email you today, and I failed to do so, and I'm sorry. I have the name of the supervisor, the phone number of the supervisor, and I have the name and contact information of the construction company who is responsible for our damages, and they will pay for it, 'cause I've got a claim on one right now.
Send it to me.
I will send it to you.
We get calls all the time.
Yes. I meant to do that, sorry, I'm embarrassed to say that. Yes, they are responsible for it, and I was told that if you have damage on your vehicle as a result, you must prove that the damage occurs at that time.
You just show it down right there at the bridge.
But, um.
So you're supposed to walk traffic till you get pictures?
There's a fantastic camera right on that bridge.
We actually have a picture, we actually have a picture of that traffic going.
Yeah.
Okay, but it don't record.
I was.
It don't record, it's just a live camera, it's not recorded.
Anyway.
All right. Anyway, the DOT, losing the DOT and Mississippi DOT, just for information, boy, it's guarded on this, does not allow us to fool that bridge and that road, that highway out here, as far as fixing holes or anything, we're not allowed to, and, and I promise you, they're notified on a regular basis of that problem. But anyway, moving on, not long after we came in office, there were a lot of complaints about the traffic along Riverside, coming down by the school, and the Riverside, you know, the, the truck track that come and hit and wells and get the truck route out, up from, trucks coming over from, uh, Levee and so forth. And DOT came in and they did a study, and they were, uh, they, they completed that work, and they come to us with a proposal that, how, we help public meetings just to get people's input, not to say, you know, that you gotta do it this way. They are, they're going to pay for this project, they're gonna pay for the engineering of it, you know, and personally, I like what we've seen so far that they're going to, to recommend do it. It's going to, where you have the wide open spaces there by Magnolia Apartments, where you're coming on Concordia, and Texas Street and all that, there's a big open areas there, they're gonna make green areas there, and make specified, uh, you know, narrow down lanes where you access Concordia Avenue. So it won't be a, a bunch of, you know, looking way back to get on and merge in traffic and things of that nature, and also by power saving law, the same thing, they're gonna work with green areas there. So when you come down, that is Carter Street, that goes by Young's Funeral Home and, and Brigade Insurance and those areas, that is Carter Street that goes there, and it's gonna, they're gonna actually make it a turn that, that narrows down, and you have a, a set two lanes that you go into access Concordia Avenue. So it'll be, it'll be a lot safer. Uh, I think Joey, the Plankton Craig, was at one of these meetings that we had, and does, does anybody here wanna say that right quick, or are you kinda tired, or, I mean, uh, we are gonna discuss it, um, just real quick with the, with the, uh, with council, just to get their, you know, they wanna go with it, and they like it, you know, it, it doesn't require action other than the state is gonna do it. And what it's gonna do is gonna put a, a bike lane on Concordia Avenue, it's gonna be designated bike trail, it's gonna be on the south side of Concordia Avenue, with parking across the street, all the way down Concordia Avenue from, from the school, all the way down to Locust Street. Okay, he's kinda got it right there, yes. Uh, but you see, this is, this is, this is Magnolia Apartments here. All right, you see this green area? This is all open in here right now. I guess I could try to hold this thing a little better, but this is, they're gonna recommend this to be a green area here, and you come in here and it, it goes directly into Concordia Avenue. This will be parking for the apartments or anybody else, and this will, uh, this will be the, uh, bike trail and sidewalk, and it will be, it will be narrowed down to a strict two-lane road with parking on one side, bike trail, and sidewalk on the other.
And where it's very wide, there'll be parking and bike trail on one side and parking on the other.
Now, we had talked at one point, and I'm kinda addressing you, 'cause you, I think you were, oh, the bike trail is on the wrong side. If, if they're supposed to be using it to.
I got their answer.
Okay.
What they said was, the reason they put the bike trail on the south side, if you look at the overall plan, you've got more entryways into the Concordia when they eliminate those.
And the other two.
On this side, plus, as you go down, you've got a church and, and you've got two schools on this side. So they said parallel parking along those areas made more sense than having bike trails on the school side, and, I mean, I know there's a church, one church on those sides, but there's a church and two schools on the north side.
Now, if we're putting the bike trail, and this may be in the plan, I'm just not sure, if we're putting the bike trail on the opposite side of the schools, will there be a pedestrian or bicycle crosswalk?
It's gonna be a strict designated crosswalk.
Yes.
And I think you had also said, um, where there was parallel parking on both sides and the bike trail. It was mentioned that there would be bollards?
Well, show, Bobby, I, I got a picture now, we didn't have that when you came, but on those pictures that we did where those, um, where it shows the bike trail and the parallel parking on one side, and just parallel parking on the other, this is one of the more recent ones, I think.
I'm not sure.
I, well, it's one of the ones I sent you just recently. There we go. Well, that's the one with the, that's the single parallel parking. Um, but you should be able to see the same thing. No, that doesn't add to the things you're talking about.
You want the other.
Yeah, the other one like this. No, that's, that's, before you take that off, that's what the extension to the sidewalk, the parallel parking area, you see how that grass and sidewalk comes out? That's to narrow the two lanes, and the parallel parking is along that side, okay? That's, so we show that now, while we're there, but that's still not the one.
Like that speed table.
We also, yeah, we're talking about the speed.
Is there gonna be ample signs to say what's what?
Yeah, oh yeah, they're gonna do signs, striping, everything.
Signs for parking and, and bike lanes.
We're gonna give you a little metering, nobody's buying. Sorry, buddy.
Mayor?
All right, there's the speed table. We're talking about putting down Riverside, just slowing the big trucks down, putting the pedestrian area, and having it walk across, have a pedestrian crossing and signage, or slow the pedestrian crossing, to help slow down the, the eighty wheel.
How is this plan gonna go if you're directing with?
Pardon?
How is the plan gonna help with the truck traffic that you spoke about?
No, the, the only thing it's gonna do is, is they're gonna, uh, they, if what they said, you're gonna put that table in to slow the traffic down, but at the end of Wilson, at the end of Wilson, at the end of Riverside and the beginning of Wilson there, they're gonna widen that turn and beat that up, and make that, and go further into the curve. That's, that's my understanding of it, they're gonna do it just so visibility, uh, a bus meeting with those trucks in the morning, that there's more room for them to get by each other, and plus, you know, they're gonna have to beep up that road there because those trucks turning on.
My opinion, that's all they need to do is improve that right there with the truck route and the other part of it.
But there's not another viable place for a truck route.
John Dale.
Pardon?
John Dale, you can go down on the river.
Yeah, you can cross over there, and you can go down the riverfront, cross over there, and you never even hit those curves.
Yeah, but that's, they're not gonna, they're not, that's, that, number one, is 'cause they're not gonna designate a truck route, 'cause when you do have high water to shut down.
And you also have soccer complex and, and, you got two, I think two residences.
Yeah, they look at, the, the truck route they got, they have impacts less riseness than any other.
I mean, that's a good, I mean, that's true, but I don't see.
I'm sorry, what's happened to you?
In fact, less residents, we got, we got just as many, outside of John Dale as anybody else, though.
Well, this, right, one time they're on the, uh, walkway side, that's, I think there'll be maintenance in that, you know, wear and tear and.
See, that's the thing, I'm worried about.
It's gonna be a straight line of state.
With that project, once it's. Yeah, but not what we gonna have in that case, but that's my opinion.
Anyway, there's your thing.
Yeah, I see, I'm just concerned about how the residents along that street are gonna like those bollards, you know, those big tall ones that they got at the Walmart store?
You got some of them around here.
How wide is the street gonna be when they get going off? So you're saying you're narrowing, that now you got a wide street or whatever, so how wide is the driving area gonna be? Seventeen feet, twenty?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be the state specs. Twenty-two feet, pardon? Of what, twenty-two feet of two lanes.
Chief, I'm curious what you thought.
I think, uh, the narrow of the street.
Maybe just, that's, that's just one time speaking, I believe.
I think the narrow of the street, the slower the traffic's gonna go, so I think it'll be safer.
And that's what the state says, and no doubt it'll really slow down the traffic on Concordia, that that will do it.
And I ask you, Joey, I lived down there all my life, how many accidents have we had down there lately?
Yeah.
Down.
In that area, how many accidents have we had lately? 'Cause there's gotta be some research on that, if it's gonna make it safer, because I lived there, I lived on Magnolia Street from day one.
We hadn't had any, but, you know, the speeding, um.
That's how you take care of it.
It's, we, we do the best we can, but I mean, without us actually being there a hundred percent of the time, this'll take care of a lot of the speeding.
Same thing to take place if you weren't there, they did the same thing too, right?
I don't know.
I mean, if they slowed there the street and they sped, did speeding on meters, be the same concept, right? If you're not there, you can't stop the traffic.
Right, but, uh, I think this'll slow it down on its own to an extent.
My concern again is the project. We got projects all over this town, and guess what we gotta do with it? We gotta maintain it. Once we get them, we got it, and once we got them, we gotta maintain it. That's my opinion, that's all I gotta say.
At what cost to the team?
None.
Zero, absolutely none.
Here's the deal, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what the state's gonna pay. If they get, if they get out Concordia and they get to Oak Street, and that's gonna take eight hundred and fifty, we stop at Oak Street. In other words, they, that's, they're gonna pay that, they're gonna cover engineering oversight, so we don't have to pay that, we don't pay that.
Okay. Not a.
Not, 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 we will have to strip it every so often, once every, I think you'll ever make the time.
Ms. Dennis?
We saw a part of what was gonna happen with, uh, Concordia Avenue, but we don't see any dialogue about Wilson Avenue and the truck route. Is there more to this plan?
The only conversation I got on Wilson is that they were gonna extend the curb.
Hey, we have that picture, we have something to show that, they did, they, those steep ups on the curb of Wilson.
They're gonna, they're gonna expand the size of the curb and beep it up, and, uh.
Can't open up the bid, it's, it's just the most dangerous corner in the world.
There, I mean, that'd be, that'd be a thing to spend money on, that corner, but the rest of it, I just don't see it.
Well, there it is, they're including that, but it's, it's.
I will say this, there's a lot of people, a lot of kids that's on that street, bikes and stuff, in that bike lane, and making those, those, those specific areas that a car can go down. I, I bet you if you have a kid down in there, you'd love to see that bike field, they rode their bike to school or walked to school, and, and as far as maintenance, you've got a street there now, sidewalks, you gotta maintain now. You're talking about paint and striping, and also them doing, uh, on the green area here, there would be some grass, but, I agree.
Just there is a plan for Florida Avenue, Florida Street?
There, this, uh, Florida Street was not in the scope of their, their study, what they looked at.
So there's no direction of the truck traffic from the block and storage, obviously?
I'm starting.
There's no, uh, direction to bring the traffic down Florida Street? There's no recommendation?
He's talking TJ Ranch trucks.
He's telling the trucks going through that, going through the. No, no, no. They, they have to use that truck route, why do they come down far?
No, I'm asking, I'm asking if it was included in any plan that we didn't see.
No, there, that's, that truck route's been established all the time.
Too long.
Yes.
I don't know what's down there, but.
Now, if, if the council does, does not wanna do this project, you tell us, I mean, we'll, we'll, tell them y'all don't wanna do it.
Can you do part and parcel?
Ask them about Wilson Street, I'd be agree with that. I, I think that's a definite positive, that's a definite need down there. That's a very dangerous one, that, that truck route.
That, that's the solution for Wilson's country. The real solution is that corner's too dang long for the trucks and buses.
And buses, and, and, kids turn, bicycles, now you're right.
And John Dale, down the riverfront. That'll work better.
Do we have to make a decision on this?
They want, they haven't pressed us yet, they, we want it, you know, we're gonna, we don't wanna lose the money, we wanna do it.
What's the time plan?
I would think the next meeting would probably be, would, think we'd go that long, if necessary, make sure.
You need constant contact, you can go back and say.
Uh, well, I have been, yeah, I haven't in the last two days, so they know it's being discussed tonight. If they aren't asking that tonight, but they have said that at some point the funds will not, will, will go somewhere else if we don't.
Well, we, we're not even, neither is returning down eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I understand.
But we've alre-, we've tried this one time before. We tried to, it's, I think we used, the day, what's the street? The day high schools in front of?
Uh, where, that's where.
We, and, and Ms. Dennis, you may be a little, little bit more familiar with this, where we were required to put down the signage, put down the extra lanes, we widened the road, we, we did something with anticipation, the, the grant and using it, right? And now, the same words that we're using in this grant is all the way to Wilson and Riverside, and it's basically the same thing.
Well, now, we're not providing it.
No, no. The grant was, it was specified that we do certain, that it be set up a certain way, so that the children would be able to access what was going on.
Okay.
And remember, we ran into a real dumb situation by crossing the highway, and we.
That's at Rails and Trails.
That's, that's right.
Different rail, different rail.
It is a different, totally different.
So this is not the beginning of Rails to Trails?
It's not considered part of that, so that's through a whole different agency, this is a state DOT, it doesn't have anything to do with that.
Well, I like what Sabrina said about part and part, if you're in touch with it.
Yeah.
Can you get part of it, maybe not the rest of it? Could you do Wilson and not the rest of it?
What part are you not on?
I'm just not for those projects like that. I like the Wilson part of it, but the rest of it is, uh, to my opinion, it's just not, not for me. I've lived down there all my life, and I've seen no kids run over, I've seen no accident. I mean, how have we seen anything happen down there that we?
I think what they did, Tommy, is they looked at traffic flow on both sides, and felt like some of the most important things were those green spaces and changing those, those, um, what do you call it, yield.
Right.
People, people are going through there and not yielding, and they're finding it creates problems on Concordia, and they looked at Concordia saying, this is an issue, and how do we slow the traffic down because it's a third rate? So they were finding a way to do it within the funds they have available, so that's what it was really about. It's open for, we can do as much or as little, I don't know if we can just do that, I don't know if they'll just come do that, 'cause of the magnitude of hiring people to come in and doing engineering and all that.
That's gonna come with the whole overlay program, that, that whole Wilson Street, the whole Wilson Street is torn up because of truck traffic.
Mayor, can I just add that I think that the confusion is that we made an application for that slip ramp to try to get traffic diverted to the riverfront. That was a Department of Transportation grant, like what Bill and the mayor's talking about here, but what I see, and maybe I may be wrong, but the Department of Transportation has enhancement fund, uh, funds available, and to enhance is to put in the sidewalks and the green spaces, and that's supposed to be an enhancement to the community.
It is that, and, and, and.
That's the traffic grant.
As well as.
What trouble are these rights?
It's called an enhancement grant, it's a grant that is to enhance the community, and it's not necessarily a roadway grant, it's an enhancement grant. It's the type of funds they have available that they're willing to provide to the community. I'm concerned with parking.
I'm concerned with parking lot.
With what?
The parking lot that.
Lot?
The lot that is, is proposed to go behind the apartment complex, the parking lot?
Okay.
That's my concern.
It's just a four or five.
I know.
But you would need that to get green space. I'm thinking, I'm going to say this. One of the things to think about is when we have all the ball teams practicing, they practice down there. To me, that would just make it better for them to have green space for their team practices.
I don't think it's going to be all filled size at all.
No, that's.
Well, if, if that little corner, we had little T-ball teams down in there. I've, I've seen them.
In the corner by power save block, there's T-ball teams.
Not that one.
I think she's talking about.
By Magnolia, by Magnolia Park. If you look at that little.
You're talking about right behind it, yeah.
That little D?
I know he actually, he's talking about across the street.
Where the parking spaces, I read.
My, my only, my only thought is, one of the things is, is that the, they want to seek connectivity of neighborhoods, access to schools and things of that nature. This, this would really make it safe for any kids on bicycles going down Concordia Avenue to access school or the riverfront or the lower, I mean, the, uh, upper elementary. It would make it a lot safer for them. They would only have that, uh, refined roads to cross and not a wide open area where somebody's coming through their blind. You're right, Tommy. It hadn't probably been a wreck. But is it a matter of time and would this lessen the chance for one of these kids? But if, you know, if it ever happens, you know, heaven forbid it, maybe that would stop.
And I agree if it's maintained, that does have to be maintained. Assuming it's maintained, I don't like what Ms. Dennis said. It's, it's an enhanced, it's a, it's a, it's just an upgrade to your community. I, I don't, I mean, I don't.
I know there were several residents who were at those meetings that, that really their children were excited. You know, they had a designated area that could be safe and go down. Concordia Avenue would not be on the street to get school or, or get over the riverfront to splash pad, whatever.
Well, what are you going to do about the ramps? Because the ramps and the corner of Florida and Riverside are two of the most dangerous places in the day.
I agree with that.
Because you can't see when you get knocked down. I have nothing against the eighteen wheeler because they, they are extra careful. But you got the people that are coming from over by the, what do you call it? River park. They don't look down and see that stop sign. When they hit the bottom, they're gone. I've almost had three wrecks there.
I can tell you, they're going to put, they're talking about putting a stop sign when you come down Riverside, even with that ramp on Riverside.
It's already one that.
No, it's not.
They're going to move.
It's already one that.
No, well, it's up at the corner, up by the school. It's not even with the, with that ramp.
Okay, let's go this ramp. On Florida and Riverside, the stop sign is seventeen feet on the other side of the dip when it's tied at the road.
Okay, Florida and Riverside.
For example, they're going to have to stop there even on the ramp.
We can talk to anybody for putting a stop sign on Riverside.
No, that's, that belongs to the town.
In that town, we did some of this Concordia Avenue.
The other thing that I would say about that project at the end of, what is it, Magnolia? Tell me where there is shop here. There's a huge dip that people don't like stopping at the top sign and dishing down. And I would say that they will work on that problem as well to make it a more smooth.
There you go. There, that, you know, that's another thing, the parking, they would, they would eliminate the parking, you know, the teachers and also the school. It's got a lot of people parking on that side of Riverside. And, uh, I think this would eliminate that parking and.
And our last discussion is to put the stop sign on Riverside. Um, I got a wall broken. Sorry. They have a stop sign here. So that when they're coming back, the big trucks, they got to stop here. When you come down, whoops, sorry. When we come down, there we go. You see one there. When you come down here, they don't have a stop sign right here right now. That's what I was talking about. They can go all the way up here without stopping. So when you come down here and you're trying to look back, they're going to put a stop sign there. So these people have to stop the same place. So when you come off the, yeah, we can stop here.
Okay, but the one I'm talking about is the one coming off of the ramp.
The ramp of Florida, coming over there.
Behind Comfort Suites. Yeah.
Yeah, well, we can ask them to do the same thing there.
Okay, and this ramp right here, they pay no attention to the ramp. The trucker pays attention to the ramp because he pushing the load. He stopping halfway. That's why when y'all had to redo that ramp because that load was eating up the, uh, ramp surface. So they had to resurface it because of the load they was pushing. But right there on that curve, right at the bottom of that ramp, they got the little white stripe across there. They don't even pay that in mind. And there's a stop sign there too. Also, there's a stop sign, stop road on the road. Now.
That's a, that's an enforcement issue, chief. That's not.
They would be rough things there. I've seen them stopping before.
I know. But we're going to, we're going to tell them they got to stop evenly there. So you, I mean, not, not to let you just go on free. That's, they're not supposed to be able to do that. If they're doing that, they're running the stop sign. I don't know what to do about that.
Okay. This, this, I will sum this up because this is something that requires action. I just, uh, however,, uh, Al McPrope, he has concerns about, you know, that, you know, we just have a decision to make as far as, you know, when y'all give me the direction and tell them to go ahead, this is what we like. I mean, I just, I feel with the work they've done, uh, is, is there anybody that out there? I know in this, we all have an opinion. I, I like the, uh, the bike trail. Is there anybody out there other, else that does not like the bike trail? Anybody else? I mean, I mean, be, I mean, if you do, that's fine. And I, I mean, it's not a, it's, I'm asking anybody out there very against the bike trail going, I just want to make sure that we're representing, doing our best for the people. And if, as Ms. Dennis has said, enhance that, that area.
I don't think you need the bollards.
What now?
I don't think you need the bollards for the amount of traffic and bike traffic. I don't think you need bollards.
Well, it's, the problem is if you don't have them to tell, when I've asked them and what they've experienced, if you don't have something separating that parallel parking. Now, the bollards only go where there's parallel parking between the bike trail and the street. You got bike, you got bike trail?
Bike trail and bollards.
Bollards and parallel parking. That's the only place they got.
So it's not going to be the whole?
No. It's just so the parallel parkers don't park in the bike.
Well, that makes, I was thinking of the whole.
No, no. It's just where it's doubled up.
Is that going to be the yellow pole like down at Walmart?
We can ask them.
That's the most dangerous place we've seen.
No, not that. No, no, no.
We may have to have a resolution.
We'll have to have a resolution to tell them to move.
Right. That's what I'm saying. We don't need, I'm telling them we don't need.
So it's not going to be an action done tonight. So let's, uh, let's move on to item number nine. Uh...
Hold please.
Uh, number nine is discussion of actions necessary to change the date designation from city to town. Just real quick, this is not going to be an action item tonight. But one of the things that did turn up in the audit is that we're going to try to go ahead and address to Larson, that calls for correct classification of your municipality. Because with that, it, it drives a lot of things dealing with funding and so forth. So they require that to be right. Uh, we were told that, you know, that we're out of compliance that we're designated as a city. And however, so I put this on here, but we investigated to go back. We haven't been able to find anywhere where the town has been designated a city. So we might not be out of compliance, but I just want to let the public be aware and should put it on record that we are addressing this and that to be a city, you have to have a census number over five thousand people. Two thousand, I mean, four thousand two hundred and eleven or, or so forth, it's going to change one way or the other.
Is that of what census team?
That was two thousand.
Ten.
And so based on that, we were, if we were a city prior to that, we were supposed to have an ordinance and submit it to the governor. He was going to research it and he designates you a town. I think maybe we never were a city or designated as a city. It became a slogan, the city on the moon. And maybe that caught on and it's on our letter head, which is improper. We are, we are a town. And we, so before we take any action, I did want to put this out there for us to talk about. We will do research and look and see if we can find anywhere that we were ever designated as a city. It's on our letterheads, which, uh, the legislative office said, don't work, we don't go out and throw a bunch of stuff away. Use it up. But in future designations on any letterhead or when you refer to your town or on any of your, your new, uh, any kind of new decals or whatever, it's, it says town. So that's all I'm putting that out there. Don't require action tonight. Let us, we're going to bring back, uh, something there. It might just go away. But I just wanted to make, show that we are addressing. So with that being said, uh, that completes the agenda item. Do I hear a motion? We adjourn.
Before we do, before we do, I'd like to add an item to the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to add an agenda item, namely an ordinance establishing utility rates for the town of the area customers.
Did we say that again, Nick?
I would like to make a motion to add an agenda item to establish the ordinance to establish the utility rates for the town of the area customers.
Okay. That, that requires a unanimous vote to add an agenda item, requires unanimous vote. And do I hear a motion that we add that agenda item?
Make the motion.
Motion made by Al McPrope.
I see.
Second by Al McCoy. Now, we'll do roll call, Al McPrope?
Vote.
Al McVetts?
No.
Al McCoy?
Vote.
Al Dora?
Vote.
Okay. Do I hear a motion? We adjourn.
I made that motion.
Okay. On the third?
Aye.